I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to to your republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to a great presentation going out for the council for March 6th. The Congress is marching on. As we go through the agenda, I need to admit some things. I may turn this over completely to Sandy and Pat. We have a presentation that is only agenda. And that is also a document F1. It's reflected in an F, document F1. You should have a copy of that, I believe, on your. And then we're going to change H2. H2 will become. Boy, this is getting deeper and deeper.
So H2 on your original amendment, your original agenda was a procurement for policies and procedures? That's actually a resolution. So H2 is now going to be I1. And then what was H2 is now, or H3 is now H2. So we just eliminated H2, moved it down one, and moved that other one up a bit, so.
Certainly.
We'll hold up our which packet you're at when we're starting to do them if we need to.
So can I simply move to approve the amended agenda? Does that reflect all the changes?
That reflects all the changes, yes. So we just need an approval for the, when we get to that point, the consent agenda and then the amended agenda.
We moved it. Oh, that's right. We have two amendments. Filberto Ontavetos and Andy Hallm. I don't think I've got a note from either one of them.
Andy said last month, Alex, he was going to be on.
He was going to be on, so he's.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if he's situated with Filberto. But we need a motion.
Well, Mayor, I also moved it to, excuse the, Andy and Phil.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Under closed public comment, we don't have, there comes Phil, so we just have to.
Oh, okay. I spoke too soon.
Filberto Ontavetos attending tonight, City Councilman. Thank you, Filberto. We don't have a public hearing tonight. But on item E, we have proposed agenda and we have a motion to approve the agenda as as amended. Do we have a second for that motion? Motion was made by Lauren.
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and amended agenda for this council session as proposed, as amended.
Before we get too far, we skip C. The closed public comment, if anybody has a comment on tonight's agenda. I have a lot on there. But number C, we are, or letter C, the closed public comment. That's anybody that wants to talk about anything on tonight's amended agenda. Online or in the audience. Doesn't appear to be, so.
If not, we'll go into the public hearing now where we have a motion to approve the council agenda as amended. Any questions or comments before we vote? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Lauren, for getting that set up. The next item on the agenda is presentations F1. This is an Ensemble Solution Group by James Means. And James is online, I believe, or.
He's supposed to be.
Yeah, so let me get here. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yeah, very well.
All right, great. Thank you, guys, for having me and nice to see your city council members. I, unfortunately, am in my vehicle and trying to do this meeting before a, another meeting I have to go to with my wife for a poetry class, so trying to get things done for today. Chief, I sent you over the final lease agreement for this project we're working on. I want to be sure that first you have that okay and then you were able to give that to Sandy and other city council members as needed.
Yes, that was received and given to Sandy and Pat Munyon, the Mid-City Administrator, and the council has a copy of that, too.
Okay. Well, first, Chief and I, we had, we had met, just kind of recap on this project. Chief and I had met and we both came to some understanding that computer MDC replacements for the patrol cars were in need of replacement. So that is kind of the basis of this project and coming up to find out how to pay for them. Instead of doing a CapEx purchase, the idea was to do a lease agreement with a dollar buyout at the end of the term so that you guys would own the equipment free and clear at the end of the term. If we look at, let's see, it'd be Schedule 001 of the lease agreement with the secured party and then customer, and then it has some dollar amounts in there. This really breaks down the term itself for 60 months. The lease agreement, and I want to just kind of explain it, it puts in there a monthly amount and then it also puts in there the annual amount of $1,337.67. And then, and then your annual would be $16,052. And then again, at the end of the term, you pay a dollar to own the equipment in the lease term. So any questions on that so far?
Questions, counsel, or comments? Yes, Steve?
Will this equipment still be viable in five years or are we going to have to replace it again in five years anyway?
The laptops and the equipment, laptops themselves are warranted for five years. Okay? The, all the wiring and hard install that goes into these, especially the wiring, is guaranteed by the company doing that for life. So if there's a problem with the wiring, they will fix it. So computers don't only last so long, but these are rugged GTACs that are built more for patrol units. Our HPs are just not doing the job and they're not holding up. We're even having problematics with the new ones. So this whole system, and James, you can jump in here a little bit, but the whole system is going to be streamlined and wired in hard and very clean, very tight. There can be boosters installed that will give us even stronger signals if we have to go out in county for any reason, if something from the air takes us out there, whether it's a pursuit or an emergency backup. And we get into a poor signal area, it'll burst, it'll strengthen the signal for the laptop, it'll strengthen the system for our cellular. These laptops, right, are the computer that we need in the cars because in today's law enforcement, we go by e-tickets, which are electronic tickets under sector. And we're finding a lot of times with these HPs that it's a good laptop, but it's not a patrol unit type laptop. And they're just not holding up and we lose connectivity. And when we lose connectivity on a traffic stop, that's not good. Because that's, I mean, if we've got somebody stopped for something that we're going to be issuing a ticket, we need those to work and to work properly. And just what setup that they have in the cars that IT has done in the past is just not proficient. So when we came in to contact with Ensemble through, because of the AT&amp;T deal, they were able to, they asked us about it and I got to meet James. This is a needed thing. This will fix the problem. We have these computers in these cars, which are much needed. The docking stations will be compatible, the same documentation in the car, it's the same one in the office. And these are rugged laptops. We had one for a week, everybody got to play on them. They like them, they're touchscreen, then you don't have to do the mouse cursor. And they're built for being in the car. They take heat a lot better than the laptops we currently have. And this will be the future for this department. I mean, you know, when we go to a different laptop in five years, say we've got to replace them, right, they're having problems, right? You get the new one, it goes right into the docking station. Isn't that correct, James?
Yeah, I think that's a great summary, Chief. And, you know, kind of just to add to that just a little bit, I don't know how much time I have, but it won't take long, but yes, these computers are the same brand, same manufacturer as watched in state patrol uses in all their patrol cars across the state. So they're running currently about 1,000-plus units. They have been over the last about seven and a half to nine years on some of the life cycles. So the life cycle of the laptop and the computers, you know, Windows-based machine. So as we know, hardware is what it is and it has a life expectancy. To get, to get five years out of it, no problem at all. When we start stretching it into, you know, years seven, eight, nine, that's where things with software and hardware don't like each other and then it's time to upgrade the hardware itself. This is nothing new, this is just the nature of technology. But these are purpose-built rugged devices that are meant to in the hands of harsh environments such as military, law enforcement, firefighters, et cetera. So that is what they're designed for. Built into this program is a upper-to-bumper, no-questions-asked warranty. So there are multitude of reasons why things break, whether it's physical abuse or accidental abuse, so it is a no-questions-asked repair on the.
Hello?
James, you still there?
Thank you, Austin, for taking up. I'm back, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry for about that, I had a little disconnect, but I'm back in. But, yeah, these are purpose-built devices and as the time comes up in years ahead and replacing the device, we're not going to have to replace the docking stations in the cars. So it will be a less expensive hardware replacement in the future than what you're looking at today. So nice thing about the lease agreement and technology, or renting it, so to speak, and then a dollar buyout at the end of the term, is we're now spreading out the cost of the purchase instead of doing a CapEx purchase and draining the bank account for things we maybe didn't account for in the first place. That will help shape a nice, clean, budget line item for the annual payment and then at the end of the term, you'll own it. And then we can revisit it, you know, at that year five, see how the hardware's doing, see if there's any major software upgrades to CAD, RMS, things of that nature. So you're in good hands with GTAC, great manufacturer, great devices, very good customer support. That is all that GTAC does, is build rugged computers, in-car video bodyguard cameras, they don't mess with anything else. So their mission is law enforcement, public safety centric. So that is kind of the nutshell on the manufacturer. But, you know, we've got it set up, so this will be turnkey for the chief and for the department. What about stuff to show up? It will get installed on site and be all that now they, this, and they're right. And then, hit the rep.
And the one.
Any questions?
Jack, I'm going to add a comment before, if any questions the council has, is that the company with the GTACs, the people that are helping setting this up, if it's approved and all that, right, they will work directly with RadCom to make sure our computers are programmed with what we need, you know, so it's set up for the city of Goldendale. We're not going to have to get the computers and then send them off to RadCom or have RadCom down here and do all their stuff. So they're, they'll work in conjunction to have that. So once they arrive, they're ready to go.
How many units?
Yeah, there, there will be, you know, some physical type. I'm sorry, go ahead.
How many units is this for?
Eight vehicles.
There will be.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah, there will, there will be a little bit of handholding with RadCom and with GTAC on the solutions architect, so the smart guys who are, are there for Goldendale Police Department and there for RadCom. So they will, they will assist with the imaging and getting the devices set up so that they're ready to deploy out in the field. It's not, we should be box and see you later, cocky in five years. We will handhold everything, successful deployment, so when these things are ready to go into the cars, they are, they're fully ready to go. Beyond that, down the road, if, you know, break-vic type things or warranty items, that is handled directly with GTAC, the manufacturer. I am here as that conduit to make sure that Goldendale Police Department has operational items out.
And these are for the patrol officers, right? I'm not having the chief's rig outfitted with that. It's not a patrol vehicle at this point in time. My computer stays in office pretty much 24/7. But this is Ford Patrol that needs it the most. And that's, I can't have my officers anymore out there with these computers that are just not operating to, you know, a standard that we need, especially when we're dealing with traffic stops and tickets and, you know, or checking on, online for wants or running registrations, stuff. So I think this is a streamlined system that is much needed. It will last, it's guaranteed. And the goal here, too, is like the 2022 car that we had got last year, it's getting ready to go, you know, if this is approved, we're getting ready to take that to Olympia to Emergency Vehicle Services that does these installs for the, all the lights and stuff and, you know, the docking stations and stuff like that. So we will create a file with them. So in the future, down the road, when we buy a new car and to replace an old car and it shows up where normally Bud Clary Ford down in Lakeview, that's where our state bid cars come in at, they will, Emergency Vehicle Services will come pick up the car and they will do all the install, you know, that'll all be set up. And then when it comes to us, all the officer do is get to transfer all this equipment out of his other car, put in his, his computer and the docking station and go.
That was what I was going to ask, Matt, was any complications when you change out a car within this five-year period? Is it much of an issue changing that equipment over from the old car, unless anyone gets damaged? And you've got to buy a new car within.
Well, when we buy the new cars, just like we did on this last one, we, we buy the new equipment that's set up in the cars. Because some of the old consoles that we have will not fit in the 2022s, they just wouldn't work well. So when I went to purchase that car to replace the 2013, I had it completely outfitted with all the emergency equipment, that pleasing, the hard seats, the lights, you know, the console, you know, so all we have to do is just install what we, what they don't install is like our, our radio and stuff like that. Because we have our mobile radios that we plug in. This way here, when we get set on a regiment of replacing cars, one every other year or whatever, Pat has talked to me about, you know, getting the budget set around to where we can, start cycling these old cars out instead of keeping them for, you know, 10 years. It is to, when the car comes in, like one, it'll be outfitted and by the time it gets to us, right, it's ready to go. We don't have to send it off to day wireless and have them program it. We don't have to send it to this company to stripe it and stuff. This is all just one place, one stop, go. And I think that'll save a lot of, you know, saves travel time. It, you know, when we did the 2018s, we were going to Puyallup. You know, that's where the outfitter was putting all these stuff on for us and we had to make three trips. That's not, to me, that's not cost effective. I'm trying to bring it into one unit, one place. This is what you're like, when we're buying a car, do you know what's going to happen with that car?
Phil, to answer part of your question, if the car was in a wreck, you know, during a pursuit or something like that, the, the insurance would cover that car and all the expenses.
But the transfer of this high-tech equipment you're talking about, hardware, new, that would have to come out of that car, wouldn't it?
No, as long as the computer comes out, the wiring and everything else can stay.
Yeah.
I mean, you can, you can salvage.
We're going to get a brand-new car.
Just plug it.
Yeah. Just unplug it. We're going to get a new car. New equipment will go in, it, other than, of course, the laptop that's current, you know, but they'll have a file saying, okay, GPD just ordered a car, we're picking it up. This is what they have in it. So every car eventually is going to be outfit exactly the same. So we have uniformity. So if I need to borrow an officer's car or another officer needs to borrow someone's car, they decide to put their laptop in it because everything else is set up uniformly.
These are dockable laptops that they use in the office as well?
Correct. Correct. All right.
And we have, we have a total of eight patrol cars? Is that true?
Eight, eight Mark Patrols, yes. That wreck.
Couple of questions for you. Now, I'm just going to go through them and then you can ask me to repeat which ones. The, we used to have GTACs on there before and then they swapped out. Is there a reason for that? And then, I think it was already entered the service provider for support. Is that going to be still RadCom for everything else other than the purchase of the equipment? So they'll still provide support?
RadCom will still be our IT when we have any issues with the computers unless it's a GTAC issue.
Hardware issue.
Hardware issue. As far as the, yes, we did have GTACs before. That was under John, Chief Johnson's command, but we got those. But those were used and they were tablets back then. They actually worked pretty good, but they were used when we got them. And then after the GTACs went out is when they started bringing in the HPs. And we had to have the jetpacks for, to connect to the VPN so Spilman could be used and all that happened and we're constantly running into disconnects, right? Now we're into the 4G and 5G pair and so the jetpacks are not needed, but we're still having problems. HP, great laptop, but it's, it's not designed for patrol use.
Then my only other question, my only ask, if this is approved and along with the project, I'd like to see if there is some documentation, either a policy procedure or something that gives us direction for what should be included in the public safety needs of a computer so that we don't go out and purchase an HP off the store shelf next time, right?
Okay, well, the last HPs that were bought were purchased at the recommendation of RadCom.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, is while, while you're working with this outfit, if you can get us a list of, you know, in five years, this is what we should be looking at.
Oh, absolutely.
Or try a computer so that we're not going to the cheapest option and saying, you know, it's not going to work in a car that's bouncing on the road.
Right.
The computer's going to fall apart.
I understand, yep. I can put something like that together as part of five-year.
Kind of a guide for.
A five-year plan, yeah. Yep. Excellent.
And Chief, I can, I can help you with that. That's, that's not a problem. I mean, the, the device lifecycle, you know, from new in a box today is going to last you well into your five years and probably past it. When that time comes, GTAC is still going to be making this device exactly same form factor, so we're not going to have to replace docking stations and such. Really, the only thing that changes between the generations is going to be underneath the hood of the laptop, a new chipset so that it's newer and it knows what to do with, you know, current, up-to-date software. GTAC's been running different models for, see, I think they're all of those models, 14 years old and there's, you know, 190,000 of them throughout the world. So you're in good hands with sticking with one platform and having some forward thinking on what's going to be the plan in five years or thereabouts. I can help you carve some of that out so you can get that to your council numbers.
Okay. We'll be, I'll be in touch with you then.
One last question. Does the price include dual authentication needs to meet CJ's security or would that be a different price?
Duals would be like what we have now. That would be set up by RadCom.
It wouldn't be like an extra additional equipment or anything?
No.
RadCom. Yeah, your dual two-factor authentication is going to basically move the client license from your current laptop over to the new laptop. So there's not going to be another incurred expense on, you know, standing up a new two-factor authentication method or software. You guys already have it in place, so it can just move over to the new devices.
Counsel, any other questions or comments before we call for a vote?
Well, I was just wanting to clarify, this is a lease, a five-year lease, right?
Correct.
$66,000 total. That's, that's a better deal than just buying it outright?
Well, this is a, the reason for the lease is that due to the city's budget, not, budget already for this is to spread that out over five years. So that's why we're opting for the lease option.
Got you.
Any other comments or questions? Good discussion. I'll call for a vote.
I need to move to approve the contract for $66,000.
A second.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement, contract with Ensemble Solutions Group, in the amount of $66,000. If there aren't further questions or comments, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Matt, the motion is unanimous and approved. Thank you. Thanks, James.
James, thank you very much and get to your appointment.
Thank, thank you, City Council and thank you, Chief, for this project. I look forward to working with you guys and we'll be in touch here.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you, thank you. We'll go now to Department reports, we're going to begin with Pat Munyon, our Director of Public Works.
So I printed out, this is a part of the new I-Works program, printouts of the work orders. This is just about a half a month's worth. It's still being, they're still in training, still getting caught up with it. This just is some of the work orders, well, this is all the work orders that have gone out so far. As this moves on, you'll see more routine work orders, which haven't been set up, of routine tasks that they do daily, weekly, bi-monthly, monthly, quarterly, biannually and annually. Those will automatically get set up and come out at a certain time of the year. And then, you know, this will be a record. As it moves along, as you see down over here in the right-hand bottom of the page where it talks about cost, employee cost, equipment, that's going to become more relevant on, some of it where it'll show the employee cost, if it's something where, like a meter, new meter service or a new sewer line that we built or installation we built where, that will show equipment cost, material cost, inventory cost. Some of it may, in the future, you may see some of that blank where you see, you know, inventory costs or material costs. It's just stuff that we are tracking, particularly inventory. We may show that down here, it may not be a billable amount, but it's helping us track our inventory. So as you can see, you know, some of these examples of, you can read what the location was, who entered the work order, schedule of the work order, the meter location for, this is on the second page, assigned, it was signed to the Public Works Department. And some of these you'll see a repeat where they may be assigned out there, but then reassigned to a specific individual. Because some of them you'll see staff's names on them. So it's a work in progress, but it's moving forward. I guess you guys have any questions on it?
It shows the astounding range of jobs Public Works does in a month. Everything from turning off water to all sorts of things with Englandwell, other really major pieces of work as well. It's, gives you a good appreciation of our Public Works Department.
Yeah, good idea. Although I can't help but notice there's no charge for it, the vast majority of this.
Well, a lot of this is routine maintenance stuff. It's, where charges will be is more like, like I was saying earlier, is if somebody has a meter hookup request and it's a new meter hookup, we'll go out there and bill for it. If it's a repair to their service line meter, that's just on the city because it's our responsibility. If it's a repair to their service line meter, that's just on the city because it's our responsibility.
Well, one in particular here was at the Chevron Station. The work description is separate and add a second meter.
I'd have to ask them why.
So if they separated and put in a second meter, when they get the work order back, then they will bill it, they usually invoice it. So I'm not sure how they're putting the invoices on there totally, but those are being billed.
Any other questions or comments for Pat? Anything else, Pat? Thank you, thank you very much. Right now from our Chief of Police, Jay Hunsaker.
I don't know if everyone has seen the press release I did last week, but the Carquest burglary. Things fell into place very well for that one, which the burglary occurred on the 22nd of February. Officer Berkshire was initially called to the burglary when it was found at 6:30. After watching the surveillance video, the burg occurred about 5:00 AM. Then about 8:40 AM that same morning, Officer Berkshire and Sergeant Smith got called to a disorderly subject in the 100 block of East Broadway and they gave the description of the person and the vehicle. And as they were going out the door, they had mentioned, "That sounds like our guy from the burglary." And it did turn out to be that. They were able to take him into custody and seize the vehicle for a search warrant because they were able to see suspected stolen items in the vehicle through the windows. So they applied for a search warrant and it was granted. And they did recover the property that was taken from Carquest and they did that in under four hours.
That's something.
So it was, it was good. It worked out very well. Carquest was very happy. So yes, this is the suspect we've been having problems in there and he's been in trouble with our department. I've arrested him myself not too long ago for shoplifting. So he's, he's got other charges coming down on him. I did apply for alleged casino grant this year. It's for dupalistic vests and outer carriers for the officers because our protective vests are expiring. So these are lighter vests, thinner, but give us the same three, level 3A protection that we have with the other ones. We have to buy the outer carriers because the new vests will not fit, panels will not fit the carriers we're carrying, plus they're, some of them are getting pretty worn. So that was a little over $9,000 that I put in. So we'll hear something back probably around May if we get selected for the grant from Legends, which they've been very, very good to the police department. So we got that pending. Did you, Mayor, want me to talk to anything in the report about House Bill 1025?
I think it would be, it'd be better coming from you than from me. I wanted to raise it in another place, but now it's perfect.
In the state of Washington, as you all know, we've got the 2023 legislating going and there are more, they're addressing some, fixing some of the current laws that are changed for law enforcement here, that are pursuits, juveniles, stuff like that. But one of the bills that was introduced, the House Bill 1025, did I say that right? Yeah. 1025. And that is dealing with qualified immunity for police officers. If that bill passes, it's gonna be problematic for the state because there'll be no protection for police officers. And it's gonna open cities up to litigation. The officers could be sued personally and all the way up to the mayor. And the way I read it. And then the problematic that the cities are gonna see, if they pass that, is WCI, our insurance carrier itself is already, the rates are up because it's hard to find insurance companies to insure police officers, police departments. This goes into effect. It's off, it's gonna go off the charts and I would, my personal or my professional opinion, WCA will have no choice but to drop us.
They pretty much already indicated that.
Right.
The, yeah, they, the insurances last year, from last year to this year went up, what was it? $50,000?
Yeah.
So it went up dramatically and the majority of that was because of the Washington State new laws that they've been passing pertaining to law enforcement. No one wants to insure them. And I think really not the only state that's having that difficulty, but.
The United States law enforcement community is watching Washington State. We are one of the most strictest, we have the most strict laws against police officers, or restricting police officers from doing things that have been in our nation. Now, I did check, I've been involved with the WASPIC webinars that follow the legislation. I reached out and got an answer about what an update on 1025 is. It's on the House floor now and they have till Wednesday to make a decision if it's gonna go forward or not. So they'll know more later in the week. They were fully expecting it last month to die because the last two times they tried, the bill just died in the Senate, didn't get anywhere or the House. So I don't know. It's, if police officers don't have protection, you're gonna, Washington State's gonna see, in my opinion, a big problem with keeping police officers in the field. Officers are not gonna do this without being protected by law. As long as they make right choices. Or again, if you mess up that around the street, that's on you. I mean, you're gonna suffer the consequences if you do something wrong out there, right? But this bill will open it for, make it easier to litigation be brought against police and the departments.
It'll make frivolous lawsuits is what it's gonna do.
Pretty much, yeah. So I would strongly suggest reach out to and the representatives and voice your opinion on that. Look up House Bill 1025 and read the bill as it sits, as it's written, and you'll, you'll have a better understanding of it. It's not good. Well, Jay, I just wondered what we, the city could do. I mean, I'm sure our legislators will oppose this bill. But I also kinda wanna know what else could we do, who else would we contact? I tried to call Representative Gina Mossberger's office today and they're busy and I didn't get a return call, but I just wonder who else we could ask. I mean, we're just, we're just one county. I mean, there's obviously many other counties that may be doing the same thing. Yeah, it's, WASPIC is working very hard on it and trying to do as much as they can to talk to them, you know. They, again, they thought this was not gonna get very far, but it has, it's gotten a little bit further. But it's not going real quick, but it's not dead yet. So that's the, so I will, I will let everybody know as soon as I get a word, either way as it goes, if it's gonna continue going or if it dies.
There's a couple of things that we can do. All need to remember, and it's not just the City Council, but if the community supports law enforcement, I think the community needs to take action because a lot of these laws are going into effect or being passed because there's a small group of squeaky wheels out there pushing it forth. One of the things that can be done is you can go on your phone or online and contact your representatives and just let them know it's a simple form to fill out. You put their address in and you plug whether you support or don't support the bill. I don't know if they just count tallies, you know, which way it goes, but they do, they do hear more of the voice of the people versus special interest groups, I would hope. So if we can get the whole community to go on the website and let, you know, their emails with those reports, that would be great. I mean, if we, if our community supports law enforcement, we should. The other thing is one of the, it was funny, I seen an article in the news this week where there's lots of businesses leaving the city of Portland and the reason they're citing is because they don't have law enforcement. Law enforcement is not taking action with the shoplifters and so they are losing lots of revenue. If you don't support law enforcement, but you support the work that the city does and the public services that are funded by the taxes collected on sales, that is going to be a huge impact down the road when we don't have a big enough police force or we don't have officers to be responding to calls and the little businesses we have start leaving town. Because that will also affect the fire department. The fire department is, a lot of the budget is tax funds, right? The other thing is the events money come from tax funds. Well, not many people visit Portland anymore because it's not the community to be, right? So if that was us, our hotel industry and the taxes collected through the hotel industry is gonna go down, that's gonna affect all the events committees, all the special events going up there. It's one little thing that's gonna happen here, but without a law enforcement, we become one of those cities that just runs rampant with criminal activity. So I would suggest you go online, you just Google how to contact your Washington representative and just follow the prompts.
Because silence means, no, it's okay, go ahead.
No, in a nutshell, the only people that are supporting this are the crazy radical left. It's as simple as that, in the legislature. And absolutely, speaking out is not going to hurt, but they're not gonna listen. They don't care. They don't care about us. They care about these policies and it's really difficult for a sane person to wrap your head around why they're doing this. But they are doing it and they're destroying cities and states across the country. And that's it in a nutshell. What we can do about it? Pray to God. Pray to God you get some different leadership one of these days before it's too late. That's it.
Well, I thought about, I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought about contacting the sponsors of the bill, but then like you said, Steve, they probably don't even wanna hear it from us. And my other thought was to Speaker, maybe send an email or whatever to the Speaker. I don't know if that's the plan or not, but then maybe I might look into that.
The thing is, if they hear nothing, they'll just put you down as, "For it, go ahead." And that's what we really need. Phil gave us great instructions on how to use our cell phone to do that and to be registered as what your opinion is of this particular bill. And they do even, even, I know there's doubt sometimes that they don't listen, but when it's massive numbers, they really listen because it has all sorts of other impacts later on. So it's important that your voice is heard, each one of us, as best we can. There's nothing further on that point, but thank you, Phil. That was good instruction in the telephone because I was really wondering how that was gonna work. Thank you. We'll hear now from Noah Hom, our Fire Department Chief and also a real bell ringer.
Thanks, Mayor. So, speaking of bells. So I got contacted by the Gold Bell Sentinel about an old fire bell that used to hang by around above the fire station. It was taken down in 2004 when they did the construction and it literally has been set up in gravel strip by the fire department ever since. I've known this there, I didn't know that it had any kind of significance or how old it was or anything like that. So the Sentinel did some investigating on that bell and it was donated to the Goldendale Fire Bucket Brigade, I believe is what it was called, in 1896. So yes, it does have some significance. I don't know the whole history of it, we're still trying to look for it, get some more information. However, they're really interested in trying to see what we could do to try to get the bell hung back up somewhere. Me and Pat have talked a lot about different designs, different places, where to put it and everything like that. So here in the near future, I would say, we're probably gonna have it at the fire station hanging up and some kind of a plaque on it saying what it was and everything like that. So, yeah, it's.
That'd be good.
Yeah, it was, it's pretty interesting. They sent me a, everybody knew the fire whistle in Goldendale. It was taken down at the same time as this bell and in 2004. And so in the paper, supposedly somebody mentioned like, "What was that bell? Where'd that bell go?" and everything like that. And so that's why the paper reached out to us, is trying to figure out where that bell actually went, so. Also, so the Fire Department has applied for three different grants so far. So the AFG, which is Assistant Firefighter Grant, which is FEMA money for new SCBA's. I believe that total is 195,000 with, I believe, a 5% match on that, on our end. Washington State DNR did a different grant this year for remote monitors, so remote water cannon, if you will, for rush trucks or wildland firefighting trucks. And it can't exceed $7,000 with a 10%, match, so we put in for a monitor. Legends Casino is going out, we're going after AEDs. Phil, I'm not sure how many we're going after there, but three, three AEDs for the Legends Casino. And then there's two more grants that are being looked at to go through with this year. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Thanks, Noah. Sandy, did you have anything that you needed to? Thank you. We're going now to item H on our council business. First item is agreement for janitorial, janitorial services, is that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the city's janitorial agreement lapsed at the end of the year. So we went out to bid and Crystal Janitorial was re-selected as the bidder and I think she was, she was the only bid. So we're just asking you guys to approve that agreement so we continue with janitorial services, which they do for the police station, do they do the fire hall as well?
Yep.
Fire Hall, Public Works and City Hall. A treatment plant.
Mayor, I move to approve the agreement for janitorial services with Crystal's Janitorial.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions? I'll go ahead and read the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Approve the agreement for janitorial services with Crystal's Janitorial. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That particular contract is a very broad service contract. It's.
It's got the scope of work and everything in there, so.
The next item on council business is number two, Authorization for Industrial Heart.
That's gonna be this.
This is the price. Looks like this. This is the description of the lots of industrial hearts.
So last council meeting, you guys approved a contract with a Realtor. So she's done a assessed value analysis on what she figures each lot is actually worth and has put that on the spreadsheet. And the reasons why their value weighs different are either getting a single star or a double star. Obviously, those lots on the north side have no road access currently because of the stormwater ditch that was constructed through there. So basically, what I need is consensus of you are concurrent with these agreements, this amount or these amounts, or would you like a different analysis, market analysis done?
Looks like the roads that have no access are priced higher than the roads that have poor access.
I'm just kind of curious why the ones with access but poor are lower priced than the ones that have no access at all.
Well, I don't have a map here, but the ones that are 89 to 99 are the ones that have road frontage already.
What are these prices based on, were there comparables done?
There were comparables done, yes. And then the two-star ones is no road access currently, so there, those ones are poor access, priced depending upon if the buyer puts in a culvert. So the, those are the north lots, which are, that have the one star originally for 60, basically $60,000, $59,900. That's why theirs are priced lower. The ones with no road access, or ones where, when the road was platted, there was roads platted to go back to lots towards the south, that the road platted there, but there's no improvements there. Does that make sense?
That makes more sense, yeah.
Pat, what would be the cost of putting the culverts in, in the ditch?
I haven't looked at that, it's kind of hard for me to tell until I talk to you. We're going to have to go up there, because we can't find anything on paper that says what that, that was built by the core engineer, and what the flow capacity was. The best guess I could make looking at it is 5,000 cubic feet per second, but I can't break out a price tell, we can verify that, I'm going to have to have a designer engineer verify that, then we can calculate what size culvert and how many culverts are, are we going to need in there.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, okay.
And that's something that we can do later on, if you don't want to sell those lots right now, is when we sell one or two of these lots, we can take that money and invest it in the culverts and get an access over there. I would not, there's three lots over there, I would go to the middle one, and put one crossing is what I would recommend, and then put an easement for them to cross over and cross the center lot to go both ways into the other two lots, instead of putting three different road accesses over there. That would be a waste of money, in my opinion.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, Pat?
One question.
Yeah, sure.
Is this new incubator building going to be set on any one of these?
Nope. That one's left off the list intentionally.
How was the final price determination made?
What do you mean? She did a market analysis.
Yeah, but when someone makes an offer, is that a decision that you make, the mayor makes, council makes?
No, that all comes back to you guys, it's real estate, so. And there's going to be other contingencies on this, too. So my understanding that there's covenants on this property, I got to go find those, I have not read those covenants, that we need to give to our Realtor, if she's aware that they exist. We also need to get some other information to her. In the past, when the city has offered to sell one of these lots, there was a condition made that they, they closed the sale, but if they failed to build in two years, the city gave them like 90% of that money back, and, but they lost 10% of it. But I think it should be 20%, so, if we do that.
Should be all of it. That's what you call foreclosure.
Yeah, so, but that's the condition, too. The other thing I would recommend that the council really consider when they're looking at this, these offers, is, is it creating jobs? Because that's the whole point of the industrial tract, is it creating jobs, and is it creating a good tax base, or a combination thereof to the community.
Would any of this missing information affect the value here? These covenants that you're talking about, that you don't know anything about?
I don't think it would, no. I think there are more landscaping covenants, and the street scape and things like that, trying to keep it, from my understanding. So they want to, you know, they don't want weeds growing up anywhere, you know, once you develop it, they want it kept clean, maintained clean, have some, you know, vegetation out front, whether that be bushes, or flower beds, or something, that's kind of the intent of it, is my understanding.
What is this one of the bottom that you've marked out, not available, what is that?
That's our lot. That's our lot, not available. I guess it was on here, that's the one that we're building on.
Oh, okay.
Are any of these lots, do they have any utilities on them, utilities close to them, does that affect the price?
That does, that's a good question for Virgil. Yeah, some of them, well, everything on the road frontage has all the utilities variable. Any of the unapproved rightways would need to be entered, they didn't have utilities running down them. I mean, the utilities are right there on Industrial Way, but they would have to be extended back, yeah.
Is that, was that considered into the pricing?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
Do we have comparables as to what they were priced before?
I don't know if it was priced this way before, or how it is now before.
It's just inadvertently in there, for the most part.
I remember a round figure of $100,000 for every one of them. I don't think it was broken down as detailed, although the same exact situation existed. I don't think they were cheaper and higher, they were just across the board, and we've had a lot of trouble. We've got very good tenants, really good, prominent tenants in those different lots that are occupied, but I think our incubator building will help others that may grow into one of those lots eventually, or at least grow into a business on Main Street or around Goldendale. So there's several degrees of economic development happening with this industrial park and work of the job training or job center that's being built, so. It's the strongest economic direction I think we've taken as a city in quite a while.
How long are the prices good for, and would they, would we get them adjusted as the market changes? Are those up or down?
Oh, yeah, market changes on time, so usually I think they reevaluate the contracts about every six months.
Now, what we need on this particular item is just your authorization or consensus to follow this plan and path it's laid out. I don't believe you had it down as a motion, as much as just...
No, I just need consent, they've already approved the contract, we just need the consent on the listing price. You approve? It's good.
It's flexible, and there's room for negotiation, don't worry about it.
It's all about negotiation.
Almost as fast on that as we're closing the city council meetings. Good job. But we have consensus, and we appreciate that very much. Next item on the agenda is resolutions, and the resolution is procurement policies and procedures.
So the city currently doesn't have a procurement policy during the audits for the 2020 and the 2021 audit. One of the things that they do with exit items is they kind of ask us, so what is one of your ways you're going to fix some issues when we found? And I told them that we would draft a procurement policy, this is that procurement policy. And it's something that's definitely needed, that'll, this'll definitely help the department heads in the future, you know, with, you know, those fire chiefs and the police chief here in the future, what policies they need to follow, and of course, this is in compliance with Washington state law, and it gives a brief description of the process, and there's some cheat sheet, oh, in here, like grids here to tell you really quick, you know, what kind of type it is, if the project's cost is under $350,000, what you can do, projects costing more than $350,000, what you need to do, projects costing under $50,000, the process there. These are all prices established by state law for different types of purchasing. Some of this, some of that will deal with that, too, these are public works projects, or these are social providers, those type of elements, how to deal with them, and it'll also refer to the RCW, so each individual can go read the RCW and have a clear understanding of the law and how it is being implemented. So what we're asking for is the city council to approve Resolution 727.
Council, your questions or comments?
Pat, I have a question, I'm trying to find it. By chance, do you know if this meets the FEMA requirements for procurement? And does it allow for...
It states in there, if they're federal, if, I'd have to go in here and find it. I did put a statement in there, if it has, if it's a federal issue, they have to follow federal protocol. Because, yeah, you know, we can get it booked that thick by trying to follow every little different scenario, so that's kind of what, how I handle that situation. Because that's not something most municipalities use that often.
No. Does it also have where it can, rather than going out for ban, it goes to the state contracts?
Yes, there's piggyback clause in here, yeah, yeah.
Any other comments or comments?
In here, we kind of refer to it more as in local agreements, I think if I understood it that way. It deals with emergency purchases as well for Virgil.
Okay.
So I'm sure you're familiar with that. And then special facilities and marketing conditions, which is kind of what we're talking about when we're talking about piggyback contracts. And it also deals a little bit with bank issued credit cards for employees. Deals with change orders, you know, local businesses encouraging, you know, that, you know, we should be encouraging our local businesses based on sales tax to do that, and that's actually a very interesting section to read that, because we can basically discharge any other offer based on the principle that we will get more benefit by going with a local business because of the sales tax revenue we'll receive back from it.
It also has bid procedures, and I know that can be very...
Yes.
Very sensitive, and you really have to follow that very closely on it.
And this also talks about professional RFP services, so when you're hiring for, you know, an engineering firm, or an architect, or those type of issues.
The... Go ahead.
On page is 7410 C and E. The limits are $100,000, $50,000 within an adopted budget. Those amounts just seem somewhat high, and we talked about just approving a janitorial services from the order of $15,000 versus $50,000, so I just kind of wondered if that sets a stage for council being surprised by some of the contracts that are led and not being made aware, so I'm just kind of wondering if those high amounts are standard?
No, what this is getting at, you would be married to where, because this money would be in budgeted money, it's just saying they don't have to come back to exercise that agreement. But anything over $100,000, they would have to. If you want to lower it, that's fine, we can lower it.
Well, I guess $100,000 within our total city budget is, like, if it's part of a specific project, like the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah, if it was a project that was budgeted for, and the project, if you guys already authorized that expenditure in the budget process, then we wouldn't have to come back. But if it was over $100,000, so let's say we were doing, for an example, a wellhead, we were pulling one of the wellheads out of the ground, and going to refab it, put it back in the ground, it costs $87,000, and that was in the budget, that's what this is saying, we wouldn't have to come back and get permission to spend the $87,000 because it's already in the budget. But if it's going to exceed $100,000...
So how much is our annual total city budget right now?
Right around 9 million.
9 million, so I'm just saying that out of the $9 million that we look at a couple times a year, $100,000 isn't much, so I'm just saying that you might be setting the stage for council to be surprised by things that are led, if they don't come back to council because they don't reach that $100,000 threshold. Whereas if it's part of a project, I mean, this says adopted budget, it doesn't say approved project or approved grant. So I'm just saying that that might cause some surprise, and then the $50,000 has no threshold at all with respect to an adopted budget, it just says anything less than $50,000 doesn't require council authorization. So I'm just bringing it to attention that, you know, we could have a lot of contracts for a substantial amount of money that may catch people's attention that isn't coming to council, so we just should all be aware of that upfront.
$100,000 is quite high, I know the county for any purchase, I believe it's $2,000, for any purchase, whether it's budgeted or not, the county requires the whole board process.
Well, why do a budget if you're going to have to come, yeah, I mean, you budget, I mean, we've spent chemicals more than $2,000 at the sewer plant. I mean, you want every time we come and buy a chemical for the sewer plant to come back? Then we're buying a chemical for the sewer plant when it's already in the budget?
When it's not a normal purchase, yes, when it's out of the ordinary, just because you have the budget doesn't mean you should go spend all the money, you have to be fiscally irresponsible with the tax money.
Well, I don't disagree with that, but we're not being, not fiscally responsible with the money.
Right, I mean...
I mean, I don't care if you want to lower it, but that's fine.
If you're going to order $100,000 worth of chemicals, we might need a new facility to contain it.
That's not what I'm saying, I mean, if you want me to reword it some different way, that's fine, or you want to learn the mouth, but going down to $2,000, that's...
I'm just throwing, you know, what I've seen, I, you know...
I see most caps like that based on it's not a budgeted item, but if it's a budgeted item at a budgeted expense, it's been to the city council, and the city council's already authorized that. So you want us to come back again? Is that what you're getting at? I'm just asking, it's up to you guys, you're the legislative body, it's up to you guys.
Right, well, that's what I was going at, there's different values, $100,000 is quite large.
I guess if I had someone come up to me on the street and ask me a question about a $90,000 contract, I would prefer they would come back to council, so that I was prepared to answer those questions. So I don't know what the threshold should be.
What is this, what is the current threshold where the chief needs approval to make a purchase?
What is your current threshold? I believe that anything over, I was always told when I took the position, anything over $5,000 is going to come back to council.
But is that $5,000 or something that's budgeted? Or is that $50,000?
That has been the case, yes. That has been the case, yes.
Very often, the $5,000 is something not necessarily in the budget, that was necessary for the police department and the fire department to have, and if it wasn't in there, then that's when we came back, but otherwise, it shouldn't have to be.
Yeah, I've seen the opposite, the, quite the opposite of any purchase, even if it was in the budget, budget line item was there, and it had to come back.
Well, whatever you guys want, just give me some direction. Well, whatever you guys want, just give me some direction because we gotta have the policy.
Right.
Well, what we don't want is for city business to get interrupted over having to wait for city council approval over something that didn't really need to have city council approval, especially if it's time sensitive issue or just to get the job done. I'm not sure what the answer is, but we don't want to interrupt business or interrupt work.
Well, we, you know, this is just a recommendation. We can lower if that's what you guys want, whatever you guys want to. But, you know, for going clear down to five or even two thousand dollars for everything, that, that seems a little unreasonable to me. Particularly when it's an authorized purchase, it's in the budget already.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if you want contracts over, you know, the twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand to come back, that's, that's fine.
I'd feel better about it if we had a better budget process and a better budget discerned. And I know we're working on that, yeah, so.
And I, I agree. I mean, if, if the chiefs have a budget and it's in their line item, I mean, they shouldn't have to come back for every little thing, but at the same time. There's a lot of moving parts to it.
Yeah, this is not willy nilly that the staff can just go do this. The mayor has to authorize it. So there, there is a process. It's not that I can just go spend a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's, is the mayor seeing that it's relevant, you know, whether I want to do it, the chief or whoever wants to do it.
So would this be a line item within the adopted budget, like specific types of contract? Or just under public works?
Well, that's a good question. Of course, mine might work on public works, so.
I mean, if it's a line item in public works, like for the sewer replacement, you know, for the janitorial services.
So the mayor designee, and this is very clear on the hundred thousand, may exercise a professional service contract and purchase services contract both up to a hundred K. So professional service contract would be, we were hiring an engineer to design something that was in the budget. That was already a selected engineer that's been selected through process and it was in the budget. So professional, that would be professional service. A purchase sales contract would be if the city had a police vehicle, let's say the police, the, the chief of police had in the budget to buy a police car for ninety-five thousand dollars. He wouldn't need to bring that back to buy it. But with that said, he would still need to be responsible to make sure that when he purchased it, that the revenue stream was coming in comparable to our expenditure certain. Does that make sense to you? No?
Yeah, it does. It just leaves a lot of debate about what, as long as the contract is consistent with the adopted budget really means. And so, you know, it leaves difficulties for staff and for council in terms of agreeing upon purchases. So I don't want anyone to get sideways on that.
Yeah.
Well, I promise not to buy a ninety thousand dollar car.
So if you want to adjust it, to give me a number of what you guys want to adjust it to.
The Lord made a very good observation when he made the covenant just a bit ago. Policy obviously is absolutely necessary. I don't think there's been a question there. But it's almost like putting a cart before the horse here. Unless we tighten up our budget process, we're gonna be button, the two are gonna be button heads.
Well, I don't think they're gonna be butting heads. It's just about being responsible.
Well, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been made clear that our budget process needs to be worked on. I mean, we've all talked about this and we all agree on it.
No, I agree with you.
The budget is the foundation for this.
What date is that meeting?
The week of the March 12th.
The week of March 12th, we will be meeting with the CPA firm to, that's going to, they're gonna come here and help us work on getting that straightened out. And that's gonna be, yeah. Now that we were able to, which we'll get to in the next conversation, get twenty-two, I mean, two closed out and know where we are financially, we can start working on getting the, the budget format simplified and getting some of those, one of the big things in there that, and I think you've all heard me say this, that the water in sewer should not be under one fund account. It needs to be under their own fund account and that's something that's critical. And we have those numbers now figured out of how that should be divided. So that, those things will start correcting themselves over the next several months.
That's progress.
Yeah. But there again, you guys, you know, if you're not comfortable with a hundred thousand, tell me what you want to do and we'll make it that number.
What if we just changed the qualifier at the end of the sentence and added it to D as well? That it's as long as the contract is identified in the adopted budget.
That's fine.
I mean, that, that just makes it so that it's clear that it's easy to see in the budget, like how we know it's there, it's been approved. And it doesn't slow work down or create more work for staff either.
Under which, under which one here?
I would say we make that change at the end of C and add it to the end of D as well. So that it's just extremely clear that we can find those items in the budget and we're clearly.
So just make sure you put that in here. I think if you guys move the crew that, you want to specify that in your motion.
So on page twelve, it talks about bidding. And number three specifically talks about bid bond for public works, but it doesn't discuss the other departments within the city. So I'd like to have something on there that identifies the amount in which RCW would be met for bidding on large items in a government agency.
Did you look in the, is it covered in the chart?
On what?
What page are you on?
Twelve. Under bidding, bid opening.
So the chart, have you looked at the charts?
I have not.
That's a quick reference.
What page is that?
Page eight.
Page eight. There's page eight and then there's nine for professional services. So under professional services, you do not need a bid bond because it's more of an RFP process. So we're really talking about, so this here says, you know, projects cost under three hundred fifty K, you need a performance bond, you need a bid bond deposit unless you're using small work roster. But anything, what kind of project do you think would be considered a public works project? If we're up there redoing the police department, that's a public works department, our project.
Right. What about purchase of vehicles, large vehicles? So like for example, a fire truck.
What? A bond?
A fire truck would be a bid.
I've never seen a fire truck.
Unless you have a contract already.
Have you ever done a bid on that? That's usually a boat. I, I think you can go out and bid for them. Well, you can, but I've never seen a bid bond, never done on a, on a purchase like that. That's a purchase, that's not a project.
Well, then the other thing I would say is with the charts, I mean, the charts make sense, just needs to be written in ink outside of the chart to reference the charts. But like I said, I, I would like to see more on the bid process beyond just only public works and include all the departments in the city.
Well, it, I'm not sure what you're asking because anything that's a project or it's a construction project, a building, anything is a public works project.
So there's absolutely no way, not a possible chance that anything else would go out for bid under any of the other departments?
Give me, give me an example.
If there's absolutely no chance that anything will ever go out to bid in any other department other than public works, then we don't need anything. If there's a chance that something is.
Well, they, okay, you get what I'm saying. This is, this is talking public works. These are talking projects. You're talking purchases. Purchases go out, that, this doesn't have to do with, I think this has to do with.
We're confusing department and public works, like the type of project, the classification. So there could be a public works project that is done outside of our public works department. So this public works is the definition within what state auditor's office? Who makes that definition about whether a project qualifies as a public works department?
So then this is.
So there's just, that's.
Okay, so that might be my confusion. So this is only entirely for projects, not for purchase sales.
Projects, professional services, so like a professional services is architects. So like your, it even covers like janitor, like projects less than twenty-five hundred. One quote needed, two recommended, that, because there's no law on that. Cause you're spending under twenty-five hundred dollars. So there's no law out there saying that we have to do anything other than, but regardless of whatever we hire, we have to pay prevailing wage.
Right.
So you have to do pay, no bond, no retained. So that's a service contract. So yes, it does cover those type of things. Like an architect would be, when you go out for architect services or engineering services, you're not asking for them, we can't even ask them for a number. We're asking for a professional service contract and we're selecting based on their qualifications of what we ask them to present for qualifications. That is evaluated on their qualifications of who we select, then we start negotiating. Does that make sense?
So, yes, so again, this doesn't cover purchases, just projects.
No, in some ways, yes. But no, not like a vehicle would not be, that, that, that's not kind of a procurement issue videos, yeah. That's not what they're concerned about.
So Ken, I think if you go to page ten, that would talk about purchases of materials that are not related to public works.
Yeah, I can't remember.
Under whistle rings?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, top, material supplies, equipment, yeah. Right there, plain sight.
Okay, so then, okay, so then I apologize, that's my confusion. I'm still not okay with the large hundred thousand dollar number. And then also I would just request that the title be changed to narrow down what it is. As I read it, procurement policies and procedures, read procurement policies for everything, right? Procurement would be like a purchase. So if this is just more projects and such, it should be a little narrowed down. Otherwise what I see is if we have another department making a procurement, they have to try and find a match to this.
I guess, I'm still confused.
So this is intended to cover all departments?
Yes.
And it is intended to cover both purchases and projects?
Exactly, yeah. There's always a process that they have to go through. I, 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 I don't, I, I'm sorry for.
So let's say for example, let's look at, you're purchasing a vehicle, right? And you received a grant to purchase a police vehicle. There has to be a procurement policy in place for the purchase of that vehicle to provide the requirements for the FEMA grant. That's part, part of the requirements. So under that, that purchase of the vehicle would fall under this policy.
Okay, but if we're following FEMA, there, as I mentioned earlier, we have to follow FEMA rules.
Right. And one of the rules is requirement of the city procurement policy that allows for the purchase of the vehicle with.
If you want me to put something more in detail here in FEMA, then go ahead, because I can say we need to follow FEMA rules.
Right.
That's what our policy says. So we have the policy says follow their rules.
The FEMA rule is you provide the city procurement policy.
Which?
They, they don't, they don't.
Oh, they don't have.
There are some, there are some requirements that your policy must have in it, but they request your policy, the city policy.
So I think when we go to page ten, section seven, and it would be an item costing over seventy-five hundred dollars, and we'd have to call for bids or use a state.
Yeah, a competitive negotiation process or an alternative to bid may be used to, for computers and telecommunications equipment, software and services under that RCW. Items must be within the budget and may be authorized by the department head if under seventy-five hundred, by the mayor designated, if between seventy-five hundred and fifty, and by the city council if over fifty.
So that, that was my question is, okay.
Perfect.
So then, does that cover it?
Okay.
So on page eight, at bottom of that matrix.
Did you have something to say?
Projects less than twenty-five hundred dollars.
What's that?
Uh, page eight, bottom of the matrix there, projects less than twenty-five hundred dollars. Is that twenty-five hundred dollars set in statute?
Uh, I believe it is. I have to go look, yeah.
All right. No, never mind then. I just, maybe you can spend ten percent of your budget, spend your time getting quotes and documents.
The auditors usually don't.
It's a low number.
The audits, auditors hardly ever look at anything that low anymore.
Um, page eleven thirteen, eleven point one, middle of the paragraph, requesting department director will submit a written request for the sole source procurement to the mayor slash council for approval. I just thought maybe it should be the mayor or the council, one or the other, just for clarity, so that you or other staff know where that sole source justification is going to specifically.
Well, we need to go to, what it's saying is go to the mayor for authorization to do sole, sole source and show, make that argument to him. And if he says, yeah, I think that's it, then we bring it to the city council.
Okay.
Kind of like we did last time with the sole source provider, the I Works.
Okay, all right, thank you. That makes sense. And then page fourteen, the credit card issuing by department heads, would that actually be by the clerk or would that be each individual department head issuing credit cards to their staff?
Well, I think is what it, what I'm trying to say is that if he's authorizing their staff to have a credit card, then they go to the clerk. Then they go to the clerk.
Thank you.
So questions for you on purchases that are not on the budget? Is there anything that addresses that in here?
Well, that's, that would be addressed under basic principle of law. If it's not in the budget, we can't spend the money. We have to come back to city council for a budget amendment or say that we have to determine where the money is in the budget and say, bring it back to the city council and say, hey, you know, this money's kind of set aside or we were gonna spend it on something else, but we decided we want to spend it here and get your authorization to do that.
Okay. So just to clarify, because previously under different administration, I got a different answer. If the I, the department has a budget for equipment, like let's say, take on the police department again, sorry. But they have a, a line for equipment, replacement of law enforcement equipment and such, and the replacement of that equipment's gonna be, let's say like three thousand dollars or four thousand dollars. It's budgeted, it's listed under equipment. Does the police chief need to come back and get approval for that? Although it doesn't specify like the actual product, but it's budgeted?
Well, if he has money budgeted, I would assume he was spending it. So say that again, no.
Right, so it, it's budgeted, but the budget is kind of titled generic, you know, like for equipment, law enforcement, officer equipment.
Yeah.
You know, because there's so many things to list, right?
Yeah, until you get into, you know what CIP, what I mean by CIP, right, capital improvement. So until you get into capital improvement, with smaller expenditures like that, there, that's usually the title that they have. A CIP where it's a larger expenditure is going to spell it out exactly what it's for, like a new police vehicle.
But if it's, if it's under that, then they don't need to come back for approval, right? It's in their budget.
It's in their budget, they don't need to come back.
Four, five thousand dollars of, let's say, everybody needs a new gun because there's a recall or something. So he buys all brand new guns for everybody. It's budgeted under equipment. So he can pay for that out of his, you know, budget, current budget.
Right.
There's no approval process for that, correct?
No.
Not unless it hits the threshold for capital improvement.
But, yeah, the one thing that we're trying to get to, and I've talked to, you know, both chiefs, Sandy, is where as soon as we get the budget lined up, where we can get monthly revenue expenditures out that are accurate, or more accurate, where our percentage is, you know, every month you look at your revenue report and says, okay, seventy, you know, or twenty-five percent of our revenues came in, you look at your expenditure side and say, I've only spent twenty percent of our revenue. So any purchase, whether it's budgeted or not, that is something on a monthly basis each department head should be tracking to make sure, just because it says we have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, we want to make sure the revenue stream is coming in to cover that hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So there, there's process there. Do you see what I'm getting?
Yeah, I mean, make sure the money is there before you spend it, but otherwise, there's no need to micromanage their department.
No.
And in the consent agenda, there is a report in there that shows every check we write for the month.
Right.
Who it is and what it's for. So you don't just write supplies typically, you'll write what they've actually purchased.
Well, yeah, just, okay.
That's in your packet every month, no matter what, if it's a budgeted item or not. They are in there for you to review.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the goal is, is, you know, I want to give the, the department heads where they're managing their money. And it's my job to oversee their management, not to micromanage them. Does that make sense?
Yes, that's, and that's exactly the answer I was looking for, because it was a different answer that I had before.
No, I, I want them to do the job.
Thank you.
So back on, are we comfortable with a hundred thousand at the very beginning here we were talking about? Or do we still want to lower that? Or are we comfortable with a hundred thousand? Or, I think we've asked a lot of questions and answers here, and which is good, but what's the?
I'm comfortable with that myself, with the change to the verbiage that says as long as the contract is identified in the adopted budget. But, that's my first opinion.
No, language is solid. I think language is real solid.
And if anything, if there was a expenditure that you weren't expecting, you're going to see that in the consent agenda for one day. It, it will show up. So I, I, I can't imagine anything that was not included or not planned and suddenly we had an expense we had to take care of, that that would not come straight to the council.
Yeah.
Either in the special session that I would call, or the next regular session, to get that approved. It's, it's just good business not to.
Absolutely.
But, but to be coming back to over five thousand would kill us a minute, the whole council.
So.
A lot of special.
It sure would.
Does, does this policy, other than, you know, meeting the requirement to have a written policy, doesn't change any specific business that we carry out?
No, not that I'm aware of. Are you aware of anything, that everything?
Is the council ready to?
So I'm up to.
Make motion or?
Yeah, I'm up to approve the policy, procurement policies and procedures. With, with these suggested changes that Lauren made on the language?
May I clarify those in your.
Absolutely.
Yes, please.
So on page seven C, we changed the language after the comment to read, as long as the contract is identified in the adopted budget. And we add that same clause to the end of, of D, section D on, in four ten as well.
Yes, what he said.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the procurement policies and procedures as amended during discussion. If not further changes, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you. Next item, ordinances, and this is ordinance number one five two five, amending ordinance number one five one two. This is a closeout of the twenty twenty-two budget.
Yeah, so let me get to that. So on the cash, activity out on the first page, you'll see in yellow, the street fund. So what we have to do, what occurred is we were, at closeout, we, earlier in the year, when we were doing budget, we were predicting that we were going to get reimbursements from TIB prior to January fifteenth, which is our cutoff date for putting bills back into twenty twenty-two, or receiving money back into twenty twenty-two, we received. It didn't come in till after that date. So we had to receive our, put that money into twenty twenty-three. So that left an adjustment that needed to be made of three hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and, and two cents to cover the Bay Street project. That's the majority of that, so.
Well, Mayor, there's no more questions. I make a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen twenty-five, amending the two thousand twenty-two budget for closeout.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number one five two five, amending the twenty twenty-two budget for closeout. Any further questions or comments before we vote? Now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, Pat.
I have a procedural clarification question. So we approved the, the purchasing procedures, but we didn't, we didn't motion to adopt the resolution for the procurement policies. Is that any issue? Or was that kind of understood?
It, it.
I think it was on the change form.
It was on the change form, yeah, not the original. Are we good there, though? I just want to make sure we don't have to recash that.
Yeah, we probably should back up and make a motion to approve it.
So can I make a motion for a friendly movement to adopt resolution number seven twenty-seven as part of Phil's original motion?
Yeah.
I accept that amendment. Do I have to accept that amendment? No? Should we just?
It was on, it was in your great, the amended.
Right, no, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Condition, so.
Yes, so Lauren made a motion.
Does everyone follow what I?
Yes.
Yes. Anyone support that with a second?
I, yeah.
So you told me to get out first, or my own effort?
That's correct, Mayor. We just didn't call out the resolution. So I just want to make sure we're on the right track there. Thank you.
We need to call out the ordinance one two, so I will just on.
I think this is City of Goldendale, resolution number seven two seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Monroe, Washington.
No, I typed that wrong, sorry.
I should have skipped it. I knew that wasn't supposed to be there. We can change that, at Goldendale, Washington. Repealing resolution number seven two seven and adopting a new procurement policies and procedure manual. This is the, the motion on this will close or complete the discussion.
Right, so the friendly amendment is to adopt that resolution with the changes that we discussed in Phil's motion. Phil seconded that, so a vote, that one should be good. Sorry.
I'll fix the resolution tomorrow.
Do I need more?
No.
Do we need a vote on the, on the motion?
I think that's what we just did, we just voted on. I think we're okay.
Well, we changed it, so Lauren seconded by Ellie, another, just to add the resolution number. But then we probably should do all in favor to make sure everybody understands we're adopting, we're adopting the resolution.
You're talking with your eyes, but I'm not.
Sorry, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify on our adoption of the, the procurement policy, that there was a resolution there that we didn't address. And so we went back to address the resolution along with the slight change that we made in the under-rent policy. And so we had a motion and a second, and just needed to vote on that. I'm sorry for the.
No, that's, that's okay. It's just, it's been moved and seconded. After discussion during the consideration of the closeout budget of twenty twenty-two, a resolution of the city council to adopt a new procurement policies and procedure manual, and this is resolution number seven two seven. Any further questions or comments? Please don't ask before I am. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any orders of clear confusion?
Did Sandy get all that?
Sandy gets it all.
Yep.
If she can keep half of us, then we're okay. Thanks, Lauren, for catching that.
Very good. Okay, the next item is a report of officers. I'll begin with the city council members, and we'll start with Ellie. Lauren? Dave?
Oh, nothing more for me today. Thank you, Mayor.
Steve?
I have a couple items I would like to address, Pat. We discussed at our last public work committee meeting, and I'd like to, well, for, for the rest of the council, an update on the action or movement regarding that rate, rate study that we've been waiting for and waiting for.
Yeah, we had a meeting with her last week, so I can, and it's, we got her the information she needed late last week to finish, to start working on finishing that up. She's probably still two and a half months out, so I'm going to go ahead and bring the, the one that just has to do with inflation up, and then we'll go back when we get the other one and bring it back at that time, to the finished one.
But I have the impression that we can move on addressing the rates before this is completely done.
That's what I was saying.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, as a council, as a council, approving any action directly rated, related to our rates.
Well, yeah, we have to go through a public hearing process.
Well, yeah, yeah, for sure.
So, yes, that's what I was just saying is, so what I brought to you guys before was just based on inflation. They weren't done with the, the major rate study. There's still several months out from that. So what I'm going to do is set up a public hearing, so we can have a public hearing and move forward with adopting the, the rate study information she provided us, just based on inflation only. And then, when they're done with the, the rest of that, we'll bring that back again and go through that same process. Because it, it's, it's pretty in-depth. She, she's gone out forty years. What we basically, you know, it, it, it's hard to predict for forty years, because there's going to be ups and downs through that. But, but that's what she's doing, is trying to put the city in a very good financial spot. If we follow that procedure throughout that time, we shouldn't have these big hikes again like this. And, you know, unless if you get inflation like we've had, you know, that's, but that's based on inflation, not based on our fees, is what we're trying to, if we adjust our fees correctly, it'll stop these big hikes every ten years and which, you know, upsets people, and I don't blame them. That's where we've talked about the, the two, the two point five escalator annually. Is, if we continue doing that every year, then we don't get out there and get ourselves in a hole like we currently are and happen to get back out of that hole. And, because you, if, you know, costs go up every year. Our, our rates should go up to match those costs every year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, when can you raise something to the council?
I will try to have it by next council meeting.
Okay, good, very good.
Pat?
Hello.
If I can ask for a clarifier?
What's that?
If I can ask for a clarifier during your time, just, do we know the time in between when she'll finish the next rate study? I mean, are we talking about weeks, months?
She said she was at least two months out.
Just wondering if we want to go through both processes, with a, with a time gap or just one process?
Yeah, that's up to you, guys, as a group. If you, you know, we can do it twice, or we can rip the Band-Aid off all at once, but.
I think we wouldn't necessarily be doing it twice. We'd be doing a portion of it now, and we'll have to deal with it later.
Yeah.
We already have that part taken care of and have the wheels in motion.
This one's going to be pretty easy, because, you know, if we, there's no arguing the inflation. The, you know, people are still going to be upset, and I definitely understand that. The other one is, you have more options, I guess, available to you, is how I would put it, you know? Because, you know, we've talked about the utility tax issue, which is a self-imposed tax, and so everyone stands on ourselves that, you know, we've talked about that, we, you know, we've talked about, you know, should that be, you know, currently is that six percent, should it go to eight percent, ten percent, twelve percent? And I've asked her to bring it out in those categories, so you guys can make that decision. The other thing that we're doing is, you know, is saying, okay, do you want to get completely on track now? Or, you know, we could do this adjustment and be good for the next five years, and then do this adjustment and be good. You know, that's really up to the council, I'll leave that up to the council. My, my job is to give you guys options, which you guys, so you have options in front of you to make a decision on what you feel is best for the community.
Well, the numbers will, I'll flesh that out.
Yeah.
And there are not a lot of numbers to deal with.
And I think, once you get through the initial adjustment, then I continue, every year, two percent or so keeps us up with what most of the market will be handling. I think it'll be easier on everybody, the community especially.
It'll certainly help soften the blow.
Yeah.
To say least, I feel like, as I said, we still have to, because of the variables involved. I mean, nobody can tell the future, unfortunately. So you're going to have to be making adjustments, some later, and the whole idea is to help, to try to make them as painless.
Yes.
As possible.
Very tough times.
They're going to be inevitable, but to try to make it as painless as possible, and I think that's a direction we're headed here. And the sooner the better, and it helps our revenue, yeah.
Well, I, I, I do know that Carl, in your, when he was here, he, he tried to get an escalator established and was, you know, shut down.
Yeah.
And, you know, the. And, you know, and I've read the numbers. If it would have been put in place, we would have had a slight increase now. And now we're... But the inflation and driving up the prices of goods and supplies, it's, I mean, it's really high for public works.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's, you know, more than tripled of what we, the city was paying for. You know, the same list that they ought to buy every year, two and a half years ago, has cost them $25,000. It's cost them $60,000 today.
Well, the escalators are going to really, really help. That's going to do more good than anything to help alleviate the whole, the whole idea, the whole notion of increasing rates and all that on a regular basis. And it's not a new idea. I mean, this was probably 20 years ago.
Yeah.
But that's, that's new here. That's, that's great news. Great news. One more thing, an update on the ARPA funds. What's happened with them?
You set up the ARPA fund account. Yeah, so like we talked about, we're going to start paying the police department out of those funds and putting that other fund money aside.
Just using the police department, not any of the other departments?
That's up to the city council. I mean, do you want to spend the funds or, you know, it depends on how you want to use the funds.
Well, I was really...
Was that ever decided?
Excited about that first, the first proposal you made as far as how to set that up.
That's what we're kind of doing, but it's still, the money's still there. But if we do it that way, then you can use that money in so many other options. It's, it's up to you guys what you want to do. But we need to start spending it because we got to get it.
We do. That's the main thing. That's the whole main objective here is to use it. It's just sitting in a coffee can, doing no good for us, and it's 10% of our budget. But, I mean, I suggested using all three departments, fire department, the police, law enforcement, and public orders, and based the amount relative to their budgets. Law enforcement will give them a lion's share regardless. But use all the, all three of the main departments.
However you guys want to deal with it is up to you guys. Or do you want to have more discussion on it?
Was that ever decided? I know we had long discussions about it, and we went back and forth. And didn't realize that that was all settled and done.
The thing is, is we've got to start spending them. That's it. Could we bring this up in another council meeting for further discussion? Oh, right, right. No, I just, you know, it's been on the list, on the list. I just wanted to refresh the whole motion. Bring it up. We didn't expect any...
I would like to see that, and then, you know, maybe some of this money we do, we can put, set aside, I guess, in the budget. Can we do that? Or does it all have to be spent?
Well, yes and no, right?
Okay, okay.
Maybe Pat could just bring it back to the motion that we made before and update us on where is that with implementing that? Does that work?
Yeah.
I mean, we can just relash that.
Just kind of rethink it.
And I like my suggestion. I think I'm, this is what I've worked with that too, a small percentage of it. Up to the side for whatever. I mean, the, the ways that they are saying that money can be used is pretty broad. I mean, it's, some of it's up for interpretation for sure, but if you buy a recommendation, we can be able to leave all the money in general fund. Well, eventually you want to, right?
Because the gist of it is, is to spend that money on the police department budget so that we can get that money into the general fund.
Right.
That's money we're not spending.
It's just a way of getting to the general fund so we have that.
Yeah, and then that money we're not saving will go into reserve right now.
Well, I understand the principles of that, absolutely. I just would like to spread it out a little bit more. Be more precise, I guess, for the general fund. Okay?
I always recommend waiting a year and a half and then spread it out all you want.
I don't think we want to wait a year and a half.
Well, not wait a year and a half to take action on the funds.
Right.
Wait a year and a half on where the money is spent afterwards that you're going to save.
Oh, once it goes into the general fund, then, yeah, yeah.
So can we ask that? Because, I mean, it's been a while since this was brought up, and we asked that at the end of next council meeting?
Yes.
Agenda?
I would say yes.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I just want to commend Mylan on all the time and effort, and you too.
We had a really great trip.
Yes.
Working with our elected representatives.
Well, I was going to record on that, but then I'll, it's, when we talk about it now, well, since we have... Last meeting, we, I talked about for the mayor and I, we were up in Olympia talking to our legislators to get funding for the ramp for the observatory. And in the meantime here, about a week ago, we got an email that two state senators, Senator King and Senator Hunt, sent a letter to the chair of the Capitol Projects to fund the projects, to fund the funding for the ramp for the observatory. They, the parks are very pleased about this, and I think that once the chair puts it in, well, then it's a good chance that it will be approved. And so we're, no, I think it's great. I think it's good that we're going to get potentially the four, it's $3 million, is what it is. So I think that way we'll be able to complete the observatory. And then, and that's our goal for the city and the chambers to, you know, for tourism, for, you know, for observatories. So, yeah, anyway, no, I think that's very good, so. Again, that was my comment there. I don't have anything else. We're kind of running on time here.
Good reception from everyone of the legislators that we met with. It was really a very good experience.
The only thing I want to say is just, I think Mylan is right on track as to getting involved and what it means. If you want change, if you want something done, you have to get involved. I think that's the best.
That's it.
That's the best choice. The second best choice is making your heard, your voice heard, whether you get involved with boards, councils like this one, or come in and speak up. Don't, don't sit back and expect things, you know, that you think to be said or heard if you don't say them. And again, with, with the legislation that Chief Hunsaker brought is if we're not involved necessarily in, in those bodies making those decisions, then we need to have our voices heard. So just want to push that, and thanks, Mylan, for getting involved. I mean, you, you could essentially say that, you know, his involvement with that has gotten the observatory moving. If it wasn't, I'd be knocking on doors every other week.
Right, right.
It's a whole life.
So I've been at it for a long time.
Either do the budget, or he keeps coming up there, so.
Phil, do you have anything?
That's it. That's all I have.
On the mayor's side, we've talked before about this AWC training for newly electives and the different thing on Robert Schrute's order. We have the presentation that can be watched by the entire city council. And I would like to call a special council workshop for the 13th of March, it'll be next Monday. And it could be either at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, whatever it would be the best for you all. And I don't think it would be probably more than an hour, hour and a half, because everyone will be watching the information being given to us. And we'll discuss it on ourselves, how some of that fits with our council as well. Is that something that you can support? I think it'd be nicely done. I did, you see, that's a good job.
I'll be out of town that evening, but I can watch it another time if...
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be off the laptop. Just to send me the, so if you're available, you can, we can sign it up for Zoom. Or then I can share my screen where you can see it.
That's all right, Lauren, because I'll come, you can come in, sit in my office, I'll make sure you watch.
If you have...
I'm going to take an exam, too.
So if you have someone available, it can be, they can be able to.
They just cancel your trip.
So what time on Monday, the 13th?
6 o'clock, all right. Just like council, 6 o'clock. And we'll keep it to a minimum of time, but we really want to get discussion on the things that are raised. It'll help us as council and mayor and city leaders to be a service. And last, on that is our city administrator talking about city administrators.
You gotta warn me outside. I'm done. No more talking for me.
Now, don't blame me a bit. We now have on the agenda open public session, open public comments. Anybody here for public comments, either in the chamber or on the telephone or Zoom? Anyone with a public comment they wish to make on anything? If not, it's time for a motion to adjourn or to just linger on.
I am to adjourn.
Thank you, Ellie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a second.
Second. Aye.
We're only two minutes over time.